There is a very unkind young lady, six-year-old.
Yes. I see they left the cables to trip over, that's good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you could take your seats, we'd like to start the session, please. Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this session. There are two main themes for this session, and I'm sure you're all here to learn about both with equal interest. The first part is the introduction of the three new 5G PPP infrastructure projects, and there we will have a representative from each project to give a short introduction. Now, we have to thank them for participating because their projects haven't actually started yet. And then, after the three presentations, we'll open for a couple of questions and answers to the projects, well, your questions and hopefully their answers. The second part, which we'll get to then, is the information on ICT19. We'll share what information we can, a short presentation from the Commission, followed by a presentation from the industry side on the pre-structuring concept that they had. And if we have time, then we'll have more questions there. Okay, we'll try and get the last people seated and then we'll start the session. Our first speaker in this, well, we have two speakers, actually. We have an introduction from Bernard Barani, from the European Commission, and from Colin Wilcock, from the 5G Infrastructure Association. So could we have presentation one, please, for Bernard Barani, please?
So, good afternoon and thank you very much, David, for this short introduction. So I will tell you a few words on our perspective on the call and on the implementation of this infrastructure, so-called infrastructure type of project. First, a little bit of background, as you probably aware, we are now entering 5G P3. Phase 3 is in line with the policy objective that we have, let's say, outlined in the 5G Action Plan. That means deployment in 5G cities by 2020 and deployment along the main transport pass by 2025, with also a strong focus on 5G penetration into vertical sectors. So to make that happen, we are sort of incentivizing the ecosystems to first have a kind of 5G pan-European test platforms that can be used later by the vertical industries to test their use case, and both from a technological perspective and from a business perspective. So this call was here, and we expect that it will prepare for the call, which is to come later, that Pavlos will introduce later. So we had a number of proposals, we had 15 proposals altogether, which is, in my view, it's a little bit on a high side, taking into account that we were asking for something which is almost pre-operational in terms of equipments, and there are not so many industrialists which are able to provide these platforms. But nevertheless, we got very high-quality proposals, only three proposals were below threshold, so it was a very difficult choice at the end of the day. And what we can already see is that we have had a strong mobilization of the industry, bringing 5G equipments to the platform, so bringing 5G-like equipments to the platforms. We had some replication proposals, that's normal, because we have several proposals. And what is interesting to note is that we had already a strong presence of verticals into the projects which have been submitted, because it was found easier to develop the requirements from the verticals if they are already involved at the level of the platform stage. So very good response to the call. At the end of the day, what comes out of it is a selection of three projects that we'll present later for a total amount of budget of a little bit more than 50 million. Since we had 60 million for this call, it means that we have a leftover delta budget of about 8.5 million, which will have to be used for something else, which is not defined at this point in time. So we have one project in reserve, or two projects in reserve. Of course, if budget becomes available, we will go for the implementation of these projects. Now, in terms of a few statistics, we together have 82 participants in the various projects, 71% private, 60% SME, so it's below our target of 20% SME. So here, on the one hand, we have a very strong industry participation, which is something we like, we promote. On the other hand, the SME side is a little bit under, let's say, the objective of sell ourselves. But what is interesting to note is that a large number of players are new players, so this is also something which is good for the renewal of the ecosystem. At the end of the day, we have platforms which is covered by these three projects, which covers about nine member states plus one associated countries, with nodes which are located in all these cities that you have here on this table. So all this will be called upon to develop nodes which are going to be integrated in this platform. So we have, in our understanding, all elements of a complete 5G value chain. We called for specific interest from virtualization and resource management perspective just to help to support the use cases for the verticals which is there. We see also that there is the presence of 5G interoperability framework, which is good, and this is preparing the next 5G P3 release. There is commitment in all these proposals basically to reuse Release 15 type of developments, but on the other hand, it's also useful to pave the way towards what Release 16 is supposed to provide. So here you have a set of lead participants, both from the lead participants altogether, and these are the lead industries which are behind all these projects, so it can give you an idea of who is behind what. And in terms of conclusions, so again, we expect, we believe we have a very good coverage of the call objectives, both from the perspective of measuring the KPIs that are promised by 5G and preparing the trial framework for ICT19. These things, these things I said already. What I want to stress is the importance of the interworking framework. We believe this is something which is very interesting from this platform, because in our view, can be discussed later, but in our view, this provides, let's say, an environment which goes beyond the traditional bilateral experiments that vendors are making with operators on a pre-commercial basis. So we go a little bit beyond this stage, which is of course the objective. And we are putting two question marks that we will have to discuss further with the project. First, can we have further integration across the three projects to have a real pan-European end-to-end platform? And can we think, or can we, let's say, use these projects as a platform to leapfrog or to bridge into the MFF, which was presented by my director this morning, in particular the CEF2 framework, and use already these platforms to prepare for the deployment initiatives that we plan to initiate under the next MFF? So these will be questions for the future, but these are things that we will have to dig a little bit into. So with this, I stop here. I hope I was not too long. And I understand there will be room for questions later?
So, good afternoon, as people are trying to put my slides up. I haven't got too many slides, you don't need to be too worried. I'll try and be quick, because obviously the interesting thing is actually what the Phase 3 projects are and what they offer. So, my name's Colin Wilcock and I am chairman of the 5GIA board. And this is the private side of the 5G PPP. So we aim to represent European industry, and we work quite closely with the European Commission, trying to guide where the current program goes, and hopefully also have some influence where the following programs will happen. Let's see how we do. What I wanted to do is I wanted to take a slightly broader view of where we are. And I also wanted to emphasize that, at least in our view, in 5GIA, that up till now, this 5G PPP program has been a real success. And really, a success for Europe. And the reason I say that is we've managed to mobilize thousands of researchers to actually generate innovative ideas, and we've actually successfully brought these ideas to standardization. So if you look at what has been standardized, and it's a good week to talk about that, because last week in California, we were finalizing the standalone 5G, the real 5G standard, the first version was standardized last week. And if you look at that, if you look in there, there are a number of key concepts and ideas that come directly from these first-phase projects, and that's a real achievement. But more than that, more than this nearly 100 contributions to standardization, is this creation of this pre-standardization consensus. Why do I talk of consensus? If you have the pleasure to go to these standardization meetings, what you see is you see over 400 different organizations from right around the world. And they have different priorities, different requirements, different things that they would like to push into that standard. If you've got 400 different ideas and you need to come with one standard, that is incredibly difficult. And what we've managed to do with Phase 1 5G PPP, and this is certainly mainly due to the foresight of the Commission, and I'd like to thank them for funding the 5G PPP and doing it in a timely and a concrete way, a significant way. What we've managed to do is we've managed to build a community based in Europe that has actually created the big decisions for 5G, created that pre-standardization consensus. And I think that's quite an achievement, and it's by no means obvious that that would happen. There are a number of areas where we've had more influence, and that's all wonderful. What I wanted to do as a last slide was then show where we are in the overall scheme of this program. So we talked about Phase 1 having created a lot of the fundamental research for 5G and bringing that to standardization, and that's super. Currently, what's running, and if you look outside at the wonderful booth there, what you will see in the demonstrations is the Phase 2. And the Phase 2 is very much about, well, telecoms is wonderful. I work in telecoms, I would think that, that's great. And the current business model is super. I love that my child spends his whole day looking at a smartphone. This is great use of his time, that's wonderful. But that model, that classical model of smartphone operator vendor, that is not the future. It will be there, but what we need to do, the promise of 5G, is the verticals. If we can't successfully bring 5G to the verticals, we will have failed. To do that, we need to understand that the verticals are their own worlds. They have their own standardization bodies, they have often larger ecosystems than us. If you go to something like automotive, it's much bigger than telecoms. Telecoms unfortunately has been the sort of closed community that says, "Well, we'll do what we think is good and people should come to us. And if they don't like it, well, who cares?" That's been fine when we've had a limited business model, but in the future, that will not be acceptable. If we really want these other verticals to work with 5G, we need to go to them. We need to work with them, and we need to do that on an equal basis. And that, for me, is what the Phase 2 is about, is about bringing these verticals in, working with those verticals, showing them that 5G has something to offer, showing them that 5G can provide the solution. And then we have Phase 3, this current story for today. And in my view, this is, I think it's already been said by the Commission, but the exciting thing here is trying to build platforms or the ability for innovation over 5G architecture. And that's why I think it's wonderful to see such a full audience, because the key thing is not just the partners in the current projects. It's not just about them, they need to be providing a solution to you people to create the innovative solutions on top of that. Okay, I think that was more than my five minutes, so I will leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colin. We'll move straight into the presentations from the three projects. I know that you'll probably have questions for each project, but in order to save a little time, we'll go through the three project presentations, one after the other. We'll invite the presenters to sit on the panel, and then we'll run a Q&amp;A session after that. So can I call on the first project, which is not Maurizio but Tassos from Eurescom, who will present 5G Eve? Tassos.
Thank you very much, David. Apologies for Maurizio that could not come to Ljubljana, so I was asked to deliver this presentation. I was reasonably well-involved in the whole design of this project, so it should be no problem even for the Q&amp;A session. So right, I mean, I think we heard enough about the rationale behind the background for these three projects that are now starting in July, at least if everything goes okay with the grant agreement conclusion. And 5G Eve is one which is basically providing not surprises in terms of what it will offer, because the vision approach and, you know, objectives of this project is probably something that will be repeated here three times, so I have the privilege here to initiate this. So we all know that there is already a number of solutions, a number of technologies out there by vendors, even research prototypes that are working, but they work rather in a small scale, in the lab sometimes. And we now see in the last couple of months already systems that are working in the field. Now, the question here is, for this project, is we want to make these systems available in a large scale. And also because this is a kind of a project that should put up the foundations for a successful commercial rollout of the 5G networks in Europe. So operators and vendors, and of course, all the support they can get from the SMEs and the research institutes to trial this in a large scale, directly with vertical customers, very much in line with all that has been already provided in the presentation by the speakers before me. Now, the approach, I mean, is no surprise again here. This is because there are lots of facilities out there, and they will be more deployed. There is one certainly necessary precondition is the seamless integration and the working of a variety of high-performance network technologies. And what is probably more important is the portability of the vertical services across the different network domains. I think the customers, the verticals, will not be very pleased to hear that a certain service is available only in this domain. They, some of them are also global operators or global vertical companies that will require this cross-domain availability of the services. So from 5G Eve side, we also have on the work, on the work plan, on the roadmap to deliver all the, to support all the classes end-to-end, as they have been defined so far, so the MVB, MTC and URLC, and demonstrate all these systems working in field trials by 2020, also underlying the leadership of the European research in this area. A short idea about the consortium, you will recognize a number of companies, so telecom operators, vendors, and also high-profile research institutes and also SMEs that basically build the foundation of this. It is a bit of a more South European-focused, if you like, consortium in this case. Now, the objectives here, I think, I mean, the bottom list is probably, I would say, standard, because this is more or less what was expected, in fact, not only from the call, but also from the community to support all these different technologies to experiment with. But what is important is that in the objective of the 5G Eve is to deliver Release 15 and Release 16 compliant platforms for experimentation inside the project. So Release 16 is something that the project targets for its end, so like in three years from now. We know the timeline of the standards, and I have a slide also on that. But Release 15 compliant will be available also roughly in 18 months from now for those of you who are interested to experiment with certain capabilities as they are defined. Okay, more objectives here. One important thing is probably the first bullet point here, that the facility is also designed in a way that it evolves as the standards evolve. So it is not something that is built once and then let it run, but there have been measures and mechanisms inside the project to evolve the whole facility and the different mechanisms, the different technologies that are in there according to the latest 5G standards as they evolve, especially in view of the Release 16. Here, one set of objectives which has very much to do with how to interface with the customer, basically with the vertical industry. There is a wide range of tools and mechanisms that are foreseen in an open framework to allow an easy deployment of the applications by the verticals for their trials. Contribution to standard is a very important point here, although the standards as we know them will be finished, but what is also important is in fact to validate also the accuracy and the correctness of the standards. So this is one area where we think 5G Eve will have something to say. So when things are tested, measured and benchmarked and so on, and certain functional elements are trialed, to see whether there is something to fix in the standards. So that's an important feedback to get the standards in a very stable stage in order to facilitate the uptake in the market. Now, this is a very busy slide, it's just to give you an idea about the segmentation of the different work, which follows roughly, I mean, at this very abstract level, the 5G architecture that has been defined also from Phase 1 of the 5G PPP. At the bottom, you see the different locations that are currently inside the 5G Eve consortium. Locations mean where certain facilities, certain capabilities in the network are available in the sites. So broadly speaking, there are in fact four nodes, although in the details, there is of course some more diversity than can be displayed in this slide. But in general, this is, you know, the general partitioning of the work. At the top, you see also the interfaces towards the customer again, where not only the customer for deployment of the applications on the verticals, but also the customer that is interested in doing, you know, KPI analytics, performance diagnosis. So all the testing also runs from the same web interface, which is of course something that we would like to have, because why should a testing of a system be, or the system under test be very different from the system that is used for the deployment of the verticals? So here is the location of the four-site facilities. So the broad locations are, you know, Paris, Madrid, Turin and Athens. However, Paris is actually, not only Paris, it's more than Paris in France. There are several locations actually in France that are, you know, where facilities are available and accessible for the experimenters and the verticals. So here is the timescale I was speaking about. And this is one slide that has been also discussed in some of the workgroups, especially trials and experimentation. So basically, the relation of the standardization to the different lifetime, life, well, timelines of the calls from the European Commission, especially the ICT19 call, which is an important element as a customer for the 5G facilities. And the duration, of course, for the 5G facilities is down at the bottom, the expected, or the planned, I should say, releases of the platform and compliance with the Release 15 or Release 16 at the end. So there is a release cycle every six months foreseen for the facility. Now, a couple of words here. Well, of course, it's not only technology that we are, you know, trialing, but we also take a look at what is the impact of the results with respect to the different KPIs that have been defined originally in the program. Some of them have evolved a little bit, but principally the KPIs, we know them. They are, well, business KPIs, societal big KPIs, and performance KPIs. And so we have mapped, in fact, all the objectives from the project and the results that we want to achieve from these objectives, working towards these objectives, and have provided a mapping to these KPIs through which we expect to have the impact on the, well, on the industry, on the competitiveness and standardization and further development and so on. So that's, I think, my last slide. That's basically a direct call to ICT19 prospective proposers to talk to 5G Eve, and I believe the same statement you will hear from the other processes as well. 5G is prepared to directly support all interested new consortia by means of open interfaces to the facilities, common exploitation strategies, provide support for startups, SMEs, and basically anyone who actually want to use the facilities, and in fact, not only from the program. So if you are not, if you are from outside the 5G PPP program, yet you have something to experiment with, talk to 5G Eve in time so that we can arrange your engagement. Okay, so here are the contact points. If you would like to get rid of your questions, or of course, question and answer, I will be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Tassos. We'll move, yes, please. We'll move straight on to the next presentation from the 5G Vini project, and we have Paul from Telenor, who will explain all the wonders of 5G Vini. It will come up for you now.
Good, thanks, David, and thanks for arranging the session, it's highly appreciated. So yeah, I will talk about what we plan to do in 5G Vini and what we will do in 5G Vini. And obviously, try to, ah, sorry. And also try to present it with a focus on what we will provide for ICT19 projects coming up and all the vertical industries interested in using and working with us on what we provide. So 5G Vini, it's short for 5G Verticals Innovation Infrastructure. That's the name of the project. And the objective, or what we aim to do in this project, is to build an open, and I emphasize open, large-scale 5G end-to-end facility with the purpose to demonstrate that the 5G KPIs can be met. Then we have set out a set of KPIs that we will focus on, but it's not limited to that. We will be open to focus on other KPIs, depending also on what type of vertical industries and requirements that we will work with. Secondly, it should be accessible for the vertical industries and ICT19 projects, so that we can test them, onboard them, and demonstrate that we also can use them accordingly and satisfy the KPIs for those vertical industries. Project duration is three years, and it's, the project budget is about 20 million euros. So here you have an overview of the partners in this, in 5G Vini. So, I mean, we have, we did a big job in actually gathering a consortium. we did a big job in actually gathering a consortium that we feel is really the right consortium to be able to deliver on the ICT17 call and build the infrastructure that we plan in 5G Vini, and also offer it and expose it to other verticals and ICT19 projects. So we have operators, so Telenor, which I'm representing, is the coordinator of the project, we also have with us two linked, linked third parties within Telenor, which is the Telenor Norway Business Unit, doing operation of the Norway, the network in Norway, the mobile network, and also the Telenor Satellite, which is operating the satellite business in Telenor. British Telecom in UK, Telefonica in Spain, and SES in Luxembourg, the satellite provider. So all of these four operators will have their own facilities or have separate facilities, but they will be interworking, and that's an important thing that I will be talking more about during the presentation. Then, obviously, we need the industry in order to build the infrastructure and have the components that goes into the infrastructure. So we have, here you see Huawei, Ericsson, Nokia and Samsung, all providing 5G mobile core and 5G radio access networks. And we will have multi-vendor setups where these partners will be working together. Intracom on backholding, millimeter wave fiber, Keysight, importantly, also the testing platform that we build, and also how we can onboard ICT19 and facilitate the operation and execution of trials for ICT19. Cisco, not providing infrastructure in this project, but they are providing a very important piece, which is a data fabric application to gather data from sensors and so forth in a distributed network. Altis Labs from Portugal, doing OSS tools and also backhaul. Engineering from Italy, which is also an important part, and they have, they do a lot of things, but in this project, they will focus on how do we actually expose the capabilities in the platform we built to the verticals. Then, of course, we have academic institutions with us as well, as you see here, being very important for the project in different parts. And also you see University of Patras, which also will be hosting one of the facility sites, it's more an experimentation site, and Frontofeau will also do the same. Then we have SMEs, Eantec, important in testing, doing a lot of testing tools and working on a testing platform, and then we have two companies on open source radio, which we believe will be important for 5G, Lime Micro and SRS Software Radio Systems. And last but not least, Euroscum, which is working with us, especially on administrative parts, a very important partner. And then, as you can see here, we don't have any verticals with us in the project, and that's a decision we made, because we saw that we really need the budget in order to provide a good and facility, end-to-end facility for 5G. But what we have done is that we are creating an external stakeholder board consisting of vertical industries, and we have allocated the budget for them to work on giving requirements, helping on use cases, and also actually doing initial testing of the platform and trials. And that will consist of verticals important, as we have been discussing throughout earlier today. And you see a list of some of them here, it's not exhaustive. Then on to the objectives formulated very shortly here, so in this figure, you see, first on the top pair, you see the ecosystem, the existing Phase 1 and 2 5G PPP projects. So we will work with those that are running and also use results from them, that is very important. Standard organizations like 3GPP and HCNFISG and other units, which is giving inputs to what you see here, the facility sites that we have. So we have different facility sites with the stack, as you also have seen, we have the mono stack, we have orchestration, virtualization layer, the 3GPP functions and so forth, but they are interworking, so that we can run slices and set up slices crossing facilities in different countries. And of course, we also have with us the verticals that we will be working with, and this is where ICT19 projects will be very important to come in, and also the external stakeholder board in the project. So on the objective side, we have, of course, we will design an advanced and accessible 5G end-to-end facility. Secondly, we will build several interworking sites, so we will have, we call it one facility, but with several facility sites, and those will be interworking. Third point is that we need to operate this facility, because it will be used by the verticals, and it should be stable for them to use, and we need to operate it, so we really focus on providing zero touch orchestration, which will be important for operators and 5G. And fourth point on the KPIs, and in order to validate them, we are focusing on building the tools and having the support resources in the project to actually make that happen, and ease the onboarding of use cases and tests them. Fifth point, there is a need for an ecosystem here, because the platform is going to operate, and it's going to be used by many. So we are having an objective to build a viable business and ecosystem model, that supports the 5G Vini facility during the project, but also one year after the project at least. And point six is on the impact, basically, that the work we do is going to be fed into standards, and it's also going to be used for contributions into open source tools that we are using in the platform. So impact is very important. So then, on to the facility sites that we are building, so we have separated it into two parts, we have what we call the main facility sites, and the main facility sites will be used to offer services to ICT19, 1822 projects and other verticals, with a well-defined service level agreement. So these are end-to-end, and we have four of them, one in Norway, one in UK, one in Spain and one in Greece. Secondly, we also have experimental facility sites, which is more focused on experimentation, not necessarily end-to-end, but on specific parts, that also can be brought into the main facility sites and doing testing there. And also, we have a mobile experimental facility site, which is basically, it's a rapid response vehicle, because we are focusing also on the public safety use cases in this project, that will have satellite connection and be moving around. So you see that satellite is important in this project, and we will also have satellite integrated into several of the facilities. Then, a bit into the key features, so I mean, one obvious thing is the orchestration and softwareization features that we will have throughout all the facilities, we will implement network slicing, support the service network slice types, using end-to-end service orchestration to implement that. Then, having slices implemented in the facility, but also across the facilities, interworking and interconnected. We need NFV, NFV mono, NFVI infrastructure and also SDN in facilities, and we're also focusing on having distributed clouds within the facility sites, and also having them interconnected. Then, on the radio access network in the mobile core, this varies a bit across the facilities, but we are focusing mostly on the 3.5 gigahertz band and the 26 gigahertz band, and then working on getting the licenses needed for operating there. Cloud run is in there, 5G non-standalone initially, and then standalone secondly will be implemented. We have IoT in some facilities, and we also have satellite in some facilities, then integrating with 5G as the backhaul technology, and also with mobile edge computing. Then we have some innovative features, and one that I mentioned is the distributed IoT data fabric service, basically having an application you can distribute throughout the facilities and gather data, and also on the experiment and test executor, to actually facilitate experimentation. Two more minutes? No, okay. Just a quick picture, I didn't plan to talk about this, this is just an overview of some of the features, this will be also developed further, it's a rough overview, so please picture it. And then, the 5G Vini test framework, very important to facilitate the testing, and the global timing is also very aligned with what Tassos presented for 5G Eve, six months release cycle. And the summary slides, so basically, if I'm out of time, then thank you so much for your attention.
Thanks, Paul, don't run away, can you join Tassos on the bench for further questions? Sorry for putting you under pressure, but we are being ambitious with this session and trying to get a lot in. We'll move straight on to the third presentation, and it's coming from the third project in this group, Five Genesis. Harilios, you can explain everything, there's two of you trying to control it, let him start it from behind, it's probably easier.
He was starting the other presentation, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all yours.
Hello, I'm Harilios Kumaras from the National Research Center of Greece, Democritos. I have a little bit more informative presentation than the rest ones, but I will keep the 10-minute limit. Five Genesis will provide an end-to-end 5G facility, will be coordinated by Dr. Anastasios Koutis and myself from Democritos. We have a technical manager from the University of Malaga, Professor Pedro Merino Gomez, innovation manager will be Dr. Valerio Frascola from Intel, and standardization manager, David Artunetto from Telefónica. So we have also a very promising advisory board with very good mix from the industry and the academia. So Genesis is an end-to-end facility which consists of five platforms, one in Athens, Malaga, in Limassol, in Sarajevo and in Berlin. So we have tried to have a very good diversity in the locations that we have covered in the facility. Now, just a very few words about the blueprint of Five Genesis, we paid attention to the end-to-end provision, so each testbed has been very carefully selected in order to play a major role in the end-to-end chain of Genesis. A few words for each of the platforms, so Athens platform mainly focuses on edge computing and the provision of services with the support of SDN and NFV. Athens platform includes three sites, the main site is the Democritos campus, where three small cells will be deployed and one macro cell as well, in order to examine cases with different provision and different areas and different coverage scenarios. The second site in Athens platform is the Agaleo stadium, where we will deploy three cells and will test the KPIs at a real large event that will take place in the stadium. Finally, the third site of the Athens platform is the Cosmoté Academy, where small cells will be deployed and together with the other two sites will support the execution of specific use cases. Concerning the KPIs that will be addressed, Athens platform will mainly consider coverage, latency, data rate and service creation time. Moving on to Malaga platform, the main focus there will be the automated orchestration and management of different network slices, emphasis will be given in the provision of critical services, mission critical services. The overview of the platform includes deployment in Malaga city, and also consider the exploitation of the Telefónica edge computing-based access. Also, the outcomes of previous projects like Flex, Fedforfire, Fedforfire Plus, Q4 Health and Triangle are considered to build on this testbed. So for Malaga testbed, the main testbed will be built on top of Triangle, and a lot of partners will provide equipment in order to make the necessary advances to support the 5G. The KPIs that are planned to support it there are capacity, latency, speed, availability and service creation time and management cost. Moving to the Limassol platform, Limassol will mainly focus on the coupling of terrestrial and satellite communication in order to showcase the service continuation in underserved area. So as you can see, in this testbed, we are considering also a cargo vessel to be part of the testbed, and also we have communication, satellite links in order to couple the communication where the mobile coverage is not available. Part of the platform, basic components, is the satellite gateway at Makarios Air Station in Cyprus, Hylas 2 and 4 satellites, prime tail central building for the testbed deployment, and also we have from Angelikousis Group from Iran, a Ilios tanker to be used for the use case demonstration. So the KPIs that will be validated there is coverage, latency, reliability, data rate and capacity. The Sarajevo platform focuses mainly on massive IoT services and machine-to-machine communication. The basic infrastructure for this platform will be on 5G Innovation Center of Sarajevo, on which many advances will be considered by the rest of the partners from Ericsson, from Monroe testbed, as well as for IoT interoperability by infotest. Here we have a brief topology of how the different components will extend the functionalities offered by 5G Innovation Center. And the KPIs to be addressed is coverage, energy efficiency, low latency and reliability. Moving on to Berlin platform, here the cases that will be addressed is ultra-dense areas and will be showcased with nomadic outdoor clusters. Here is an overview practically for events, we are planning to demonstrate this functionality in the Festival of Lights, which takes place in Berlin, so where we have a very dense area with people trying to communicate, we'll deploy in real time a remote site of the Berlin testbed, especially to the area that the event takes place. So the base, the basic testbed for the Berlin platform is the Focus 5G Berlin testbed, on which it will be further enhanced with IHP testbed with millimeter wave components, and also Hubblet University will be further used for the deployment of the nomadic site there, including also new 5G RAT technologies and also non-3GPP RAT technologies as well. The KPIs to be addressed there is user density, this is the key KPI for Berlin platform, reliability, service creation time and data rate. And that's all, our site is up, our leaflet is available at the 5G PPP booth, for any questions, you can ask us. Thank you very much.
Actually, with a little bit of time to spare, I'm impressed. Okay, we've had the three presentations, can I ask Bernard and Colin to join our panel as well, and we'll go into the question and answer session. We're only slightly behind time, I mean, in terms of 5G latency, we're not too bad. Okay, we already have one hand up there, and it's up to you now for your audience party, this is your chance to ask the projects questions, or ask the commission and the others questions if you want. This is your chance to ask the projects questions or ask the commission and the others questions if you want. I might need some help passing around the microphone.
Great. Thank you very much. Very interesting. My name is Monica Bousha. I'm from Lancaster University. I also work with the Public Safety Communications Europe network. Could you say a little bit more about what you're going to do with public safety? What opportunities there are for a network like Public Safety Communications Europe which is practitioners and industry developers to participate in those trials? And also something about the temporality of those trials. So will there be one-offs or will there be longer to really experience what those technologies can offer?
Okay, who'd like to try it?
I think the question was for Five Genesis or no?
For all of you. Whoever's brave enough, please have a go. Harleos first.
Okay. Concerning Five Genesis, because we are considering mission critical communication in Málaga, for that reason, we have also as a partner the Police of Málaga. So the deployment will take place in areas of special interest for the police and it will be part of the everyday processes of the police. So it will be tested in real conditions and we'll have real feedback from the users.
Yeah, I can say something from 5G VINE. So we also see 5G or public safety as a very important use case area and PPDR. And there are a lot of different areas and different ways to serve public safety. Just to bring up one of the cases we are working on is to have, we also have the military of Norway actually in the external stakeholder board and are gathering requirements from them. Things like having autonomous edge sites with their own core network that can operate in case of breakdown of other things. And things like this also when it comes to some use cases around drones actually, which they look a lot into as examples. So in general, gathering the requirements and figure out how we can use that as input into designing the architecture and the systems that we are building. And then secondly, we will of course work with them to run and test their use cases. That will be over a longer period depending on what of course they would like to do. But as long as the platform is operational from, we launch it as operational until the end of project plus one year.
Yeah, maybe I should add here that it is the same for 5G Eve that the operational nature of the facility is basically ensured. So it is over this duration, at least of the project plus an additional period. What is also in the plans is to come up with a value, you know, with a proposition for, let's call them semi-professional services. So that you may be asked to compensate some, in some way, the additional effort that is required to run your service over the infrastructure as long as these services, you know, are not commercially available from one of these partners that would operate the facility. Now, in terms of mission critical verticals currently in 5G Eve, there is no specific use case foreseen. However, I mean 5G Eve claims, and I think this is the same for the other facilities as well, to be agnostic for the verticals because the reference is the classes of service that are defined in the standards, so EMV, ULLC and so on.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, we have one, of course, the furthest away from the microphone.
Very interesting presentations. However, I have two simple questions for the whole panel. Did you look at the experiences of FIRE platforms? To take some lessons about what to do or not to do in your projects? And this is also an interesting question to the commission. The second, more practical one is that I didn't see anything related to what is called a software stack or something which could be used as an enabler to do software development further beyond the project work or service development or experimentation. In other words, how do you want practically to enhance the possibility to test whatever facilities are available and when? This is a question to the three question.
All right, can we take the questions one at a time? Did we benefit from the experience of the FIRE projects? Who'd like to challenge that one or answer that one?
I will do. I think it is also meant for me, in fact. Yes, we did because we have a lot of experience in FIRE in the sense that we actually started to deploy or to build and deploy test beds and try to make them perfect before we opened them to the customer. I think this time round we'll try better indeed in the sense that we'll try to incorporate the vertical applications or the user, the experimenter on the platform, even if the platform is not 100% up to the expectations of the people that built it. So in that sense, I think we learned a lot from FIRE. In fact, what we also learned from FIRE is the innovation cycle that depends on retrieving, so measuring, observing, retrieving results and feeding these results into the refinement and the product development in cases, of course, it is a more commercial endeavor. So in my understanding, this is what we learned and this time, of course, we like to prove that we do better in this case. So concerning the second question, I think it is a bit more detailed, hidden in, at least in 5G Eve, which time, of course, was not permitting to explain. But there are a number of tools and mechanisms and frameworks for development, also for the applications to interface properly with the facility. Now, most of it is not defined yet, but the initial, if you like, concepts have been sketched out and people in other projects have already results there that certainly 5G Eve will reuse. And I believe the other project will also look to reuse some of these results from the other projects as well.
Harleos, Paul, would you like to comment on the software stack and the support for developers and...
Yeah, I'm sure. I think I can also subscribe to what Tassos talked about regarding the first question. But on the second question, yeah, I think we did not have time to go through all the details of what we have in the project in this presentation. And indeed, one of the slides I skipped very fast at the end was also the test framework that we are building. I'm not saying that that is the full software stack in order to develop applications and interact with the platform. But it's doing a lot and simplifying a lot to actually run tests and onboard the vertical use cases onto the 5G VINE platform. And then, of course, having support for DevOps tools like running Kubernetes type of stacks in the platform is also possible. So we have that support with the platform. And I also think it's important to also mention a bit the separation between the ICT19 and also the ICT17 projects. That ICT17 projects are building the platform and we will have some tools for enabling application development and onboarding of those. But on the service platform side, that the verticals are going to run, it's supposed to come more from the ICT19 projects. At least in Norway, we don't have service platforms for all the verticals in ICT17.
Harleos, do you want to comment or...
Very fast just to say that also in Genesis, we have building blocks that have been originated from FIRE projects. So for the first question, yes, we have also this considered. For the second one, in the same way that, of course, we're considering tools for experimentation and et cetera. But I think that we are going to a lot of details that maybe it's not convenient now to, if you like, I can talk for...
No, no, it's okay. I'll accept guilt here. By forcing you all down to 10 minutes, I know you couldn't go into detail. So there is a lot of detail there. These guys have made very substantial proposals. So I do apologize to them for forcing to shorten it down. I think Harleos originally sent me something like 50 slides, which unfortunately we couldn't accept.
The program promised me 20 minutes.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Likes that. Next question, please. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Thedros Aharyades. I'm with ASNELXIS. Thank you for the very nice presentations and the very interesting trials. Just a question that may go even beyond the projects and also going into the ICT19. We have seen very nice outdoor experiments at different sites. And I would like to inform us because I know that only in Italy there are some licenses that have been already released experimentally. In Frankhofer has in Berlin some licensed experimentally. But I don't know what is the situation in other countries. For instance, I know that in Spain, it is something that is going to be released. So is there already some announcements that I have missed? If you can inform us about the licenses of the experiments and how these are going to be realized. Thank you.
A nice, easy question to start with, yeah.
Was that on the frequency licenses? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I mean, we have the facility sites in different countries, so it is a bit different in each country. So like, for instance, like in Norway, we do have already the 3.5 gigahertz license and we have talked with the government about 26 gigahertz band and made sure that this is something that we can have for testing. So that is in a way preparations we did in the proposal phase. But then getting that in place, the dialogue with the regulatory and of course, when we get the project funded, then we can get the real licenses and use them practically. So that's assured.
Okay. You want to add or... We want to fill in two more questions, so keep it short, please.
Yeah, there is not much more to add. In fact, that in all cases, also in 5G Eve, there is a negotiation ongoing and a process for awarding these licenses for experimentation. Some are more progressed than others, but all of them look at least promising. And otherwise, I mean, the proposals probably would not have been successful if the proposition that is made there is not credible. I think we are on a good path in all of them.
Just to add that we are not alone in this discussion, but we have also the support of the mobile operators at each testbed. So this facilitates a little bit the discussions.
Okay, I have one here and then one here.
Hi, my name is Joseph Martrat from Atos. I have a question. You have mentioned several times the support to the ICT19. So I think it's going to be critical in terms of timing to have more and more information of the technologies that each facility and the entry mechanism for the verticals. And when thinking on the verticals, I don't know if in the past you have already think about how to support cases that, the mapping, the difficulty of mapping, if you think on logistics, you think in e-health, you'd think in manufacturing, industry for the zero, et cetera, et cetera. And you want to map a case of a health or integrate a hospital that needs to be closed or co-located or you need to integrate a manufacturer that is close or semi-co-located with the facilities in order to have the endorsement of the stakeholders of the vertical sector. I don't know if you have think how to extend or connect or the facility. I know that is pretty complicated the picture, but I don't know how you've foreseen this in the future or how you think about combining and supporting the verticals in that sense. In addition to provide information definitely that we need.
Okay, we seem to be getting into the issue of what is an ICT17 and what is an ICT19 project, which could take a lot of our time. Quick comment. The question was long, so let's try and keep the answer short.
I can say something about that because, I mean, what we have proposed and also applied for is one infrastructure. We have radio access network, but obviously the budget that we have applied for will not give full coverage. So that we cannot promise a coverage all over the countries where we are. But then, what I would say is that ICT19 projects that comes with specific requirements on locations where they want to put things up, in that sense, also need to fund base station. But that base station can of course be connected to the facilities or optimally should be able to connect it to the facilities. And we can also facilitate that process from the 5G VINE projects. But we cannot promise coverage in areas where we do not have coverage at this point in time.
Well, I think we also should refer to the statement Colin made with his presentation. And that is, if we don't succeed in persuading the vertical sectors that this is the infrastructure for their future operation, we've actually failed. So this, I think, is a key point.
Absolutely.
We'll squeeze in one last question in this question and answer session, please.
Hi, Hugo Talberg, Ericsson. It is pretty much a follow-up question to Joseph's question. That for planning an ICT19 project, and now you can duck this and ship it over to Pavlos and Didier. But in planning an ICT19 project, you need to understand what kind of APIs you will make available for the ICT19 projects. We also need to have a mechanism. Paul, you mentioned that you will support the platform for at least one year after the end of the ICT17 project. So we need APIs, we need time and we need a mechanism to discuss with you in a confidential manner on IDs that are being circulated, would not leak into your entire consortias and leak out to the world. When will these mechanisms be in place?
You're asking a set of projects that haven't actually started yet. You keep that in mind.
No, but in a few minutes, we will start worry about ICT19. So we need those kind of answers, PDQ.
How many of you here are planning ICT19 proposals? Okay, I can see the point of interest. No, the question they're asking, we had actually meant to show in a later slide. But in fact, two of the projects showed a timescale which the sharp-eyed ones here probably noticed. There is a date scheduled for the 14th of September in Brussels where we will have a full day, info day, on ICT19. And the reason we've chosen September, we know it's getting closer and closer to November. But then, at least the new projects will have started and we'll have a chance to have a meeting or two and have some discussions. Bernard has gracefully agreed to host that workshop in Brussels. I might have to question Bernard if the room is big enough now, considering the interest. We'll probably get Colin to pay for lunch, don't worry. So that will be one forum where the projects will be asked to give specific details that can be used by ICT19 proposals in helping them to prepare. Now, that is not stopping you from directly contacting those projects. For each project, there is now on the 5G PPP website, there is a page, Phase 3 Projects. And under that, you'll find a link to each of the projects and you'll find a contact mail address for each projects. Those contact mail addresses go to two names, one of which is the project leader and the other is their assistant. So it's not a distributed message to the entire project. So if you do want to contact the projects directly, you have that information already. Do you want to answer the question as well, please?
Yes, I would like to add in fact to the question, to the answer anymore. We expect that a number of ICT19 projects will come along with own infrastructures. Now, one of the mechanisms that is explicitly foreseen, at least in 5G Eve, is to publish very early specifications and test methodologies and pest suits, in fact, to verify compliance to what 5G Eve, which of course is compliant to the release 15 and later on 16, in order to be able to at least cover the case that Joseph has mentioned so that we can create, you know, a connection with a core network in 5G Eve and any remote installation of networks that are bound to a location because it's a factory, because it's a hospital, things like that. So this is one of the mechanisms, if you like, to your question, that we have chosen to facilitate or at least to make it a bit easier to interface with the main facilities in 5G Eve. Now, as mentioned by David, of course, the specs, we also expect from 5G Eve to have much more details available in September to communicate basically to the world. And the plan, in fact, is that before the ICT19 project start, there will be a full service offer specification, at least for 5G Eve point of view.
Okay, I think we can expect similar...
Yeah, for Genesis as well, just to mention that we are considering a coordination layer on top of the testbed which exposes some open API for experimentation. And considering the deployment, we have three iterations in the project, one each year. And considering the deployment, we have three iterations in the project, one each year. So each year, we are releasing a version of the facility in order to facilitate the collaboration with the ICT 19.
Do you want to add, Paul?
I know, just, I think it's a good point that you make. We have talked about this, of course, but I take the input with me, being able to present what we offer as soon as possible on the web, and then finally also in the event in Brussels on 14th of September.
Great. Colin, Bernard, do you want to add any statement, or should we? I mean, I'm getting nervous now that we better get on to ICT 19, considering the audience's interest in that. So if there's no...
Just two seconds. I think this is what makes ICT 19 so exciting, the proposals and the offers that we have already on the table here. You can see the potential. Now's the time to actually take that step and try and make the most of it.
I think that's a very good point, to thank the panel for their very intelligent and well-informed contributions, and we'll move over to ICT 19. Thank you, guys. And while they sneak quietly away, we'll invite Pavlos to give the presentation of ICT 19. If we can line up the next presentation, please.
Great. Thank you, David. Good afternoon, everybody. I think we're a bit behind schedule, right?
Yeah, it's okay. Didier and myself will squeeze the time.
Okay, we'll try to do our best. So, in fact, this discussion is an excellent opportunity, allowing to have a smooth transition to ICT 19 requirements and what we expect from ICT 19 topic.
It should be coming up automatically.
Yes, should I do?
No, don't do anything. Don't do anything.
Perfect.
We have magic working here.
Good.
Yes.
Great. So, okay, I will use this well-known slide for this transition, I mentioned, so to put this ICT 19 into the 5G PPP Phase 3 context. So you can see that now we have here in UCNC practically the launch of the three ICT 17 projects, and we're very happy for this nice discussion that you can follow offline anyway. So now we have to move to ICT 19, which is Phase 3B, as presented here in this slide, covering mainly the large-scale validation trials for the verticals. Now, we, of course, in this, we had also these 5G-connected cars, the ICT 18 topic as automotive is a mature vertical, but now automotive is also included in the ICT 19 call, as the IT mainly focused on the cross-border corridors. So now we move into the real trials using the ICT 17 end-to-end facilities. Of course, there is a long-term evolution topic that we don't mention here, but to know that this will follow. And with the courtesy of the 5G PPP and the Trials Working Group, this is the overview of the current Phase 2 projects and the trials and pilots that are actually ongoing. So this ICT 19 and the projects that will come from this evaluation will be actually leveraged on these trials, and they will use the results. And we move now to large-scale validation beyond this proof-of-concept that are actually implemented in this 5G PPP Phase 2. A bit on the chronological, let's say, order of the calls. So we had the ICT 17 closing in January, now we have the projects starting on 1st of July, and then the ICT 19, the deadline for submission proposal is mid-November, allowing a few months to discuss with ICT 17 projects and see how you also draft your proposals. So quickly, I will move now to the context and the ambitions. These are mainly, okay, work program extracts, and this is the official text that you should, let's say, consult, as this is the only official basis on which we run our evaluations. So what is the real objective, the real ambition? Of course, is to implement this vision that was first expressed in this white paper, 5G Empowering Vertical Industries, as presented in Mobile Work Congress back in 2016. So we want to demonstrate with this topic the 5G applicability to vertical industries and to prepare for mature cross-sector business cases. So it's not only the technological validation, it's also the economic validation, the business validation of the vertical trials. In terms of roadmap implementation, and of course, as you will see later in the DTS presentation, this is implemented to support the 5G Action Plan Trial Roadmap, as was developed under the 5G PPP. And the main objective is to validate 5G in its fullest extent, meaning under several applications at the same time with different requirements. Of course, this requires slicing and strong isolation between slices and security aspects, as I mentioned in the following bullet. And in terms of standards, the trials are expected to support later releases of 3G P P standards, and this is a major impact in this topic, as we require industrial participation with strong impact on the standards. Again, a bit on the scope of the research and innovation actions, which actually have the biggest part of the budget, the 90 millions. So a few major points from the work program text. So this is again to demonstrate that performance conforming to 5G PKPIs and requirements are met in the context of some specific vertical use cases. The set of the projects that will be selected will cover all the classes, the ITU classes, as mentioned here, MBB, MMTC, and URLLC. Is one of the main objectives is to demonstrate that the 5G architecture and technologies that will be included will enable multi-domain management of resources and that are in line with concurrent vertical performance requirements. So it is not only to show that single, let's say, to cover the single vertical requirements, but also to cover this multi-domain aspect. And one very important also recommendation is that the new projects have to piggyback, have to be implemented over the 5G end-to-end platforms that are developed under ICT 17 On the coordination and support actions, very, very fast, as these are mainly implemented like in the previous topics, where we want to continue all this programmatic approach for Phase 3 as well. So these are the main objectives, like they were expressed in the previous call as well. So it is the management and orchestration of the 5G PPP Phase 3, portfolio analysis, create mapping and gap analysis, support to international activities, stakeholder events, and maintenance of the website, and all these, let's say, horizontal issues of common interests. On the impact, again, it was mentioned again, the validation of core 5G technologies in the context of specific vertical use cases, business aspects and viable business models for these use cases. We want strong impact to standardization bodies, validation of KPIs, and of course, to showcase how Europe succeeds in implementing all these 5G trials for verticals. On the coordination support action, of course, the programmatic approach, as mentioned, and the maximize the output and exploitation of the project results, and of course constituency building aspects. Very quickly, some practical things about, you know, the topic. So as mentioned, the closing will be 14th of November. The target is six to nine projects, meaning its proposal has to be from 10 to 15 million. Of course, this is not a hard requirement, but this is a recommendation. We have earmarked 90 millions for the REAS and 2 millions for the support actions, and there are special conditions like in all 5G PPP Phase 3 topics, so there is a limit for the proposal in 100 pages. And of course, this is the programmatic approach again, the complementary grant agreements that the grant agreement has to comply with the rules and the special clause for cooperation between projects. Some useful links, of course, you will receive this slide, so you will be able to read the text. And that's it from my side, I hope I, yes, I make it very fast. We are open to questions, of course. This is an introductory, let's say, presentation, since we will have a detailed info day on 14th of September, but we can still handle questions if we have time.
Yeah, I think you've saved a couple of minutes, so we have an opportunity for a couple of questions. There's a microphone coming down from behind, but the middle here, yeah.
Hi, I'm Shui from I2cat. My question is, I saw one of the bullet in your slides that mentioned preferably the proposals should be on the ICT 17. I believe this means it does not exclude the nodes which are not part of the ICT 17 projects. Can you elaborate a little on that?
Yes. Of course, we cannot exclude, it's a recommendation, but I would dare say that it is a strong recommendation, and we need, we don't, we have all these projects presented some minutes ago, and we want to use, to make usage of this, of the results. And the focus of the topic is not to implement, again, you know, end-to-end facilities or to create new nodes. Of course, if there is a need for a new node, this is welcome, if it's properly justified in the proposal, but to create a new, let's say, end-to-end facility from scratch, I think that would not be, you know, positively evaluated, assessed during the evaluation.
No, that's exactly correct. A new from scratch doesn't make sense, but existing ones, which are not part, would make sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions at this stage?
A question on the verticals. Does the Commission have a recommendation on the number of verticals, as well as on the depth of the use cases per vertical? Of course, each vertical will address both all three ITU classes of services.
Practically, there is no recommendation. The work program text refers that you can, some vertical use cases from, in the white paper that I mentioned, automotive, smart factories, energy media, but this is not an exhaustive list. For example, it's mentioned also PPDR, which is not part of this original, let's say, white paper. So there is no recommendation on the number of verticals that you're going to use. What you have to make sure is that you will show that all these requirements that I mentioned about concurrent usage of network resources by different vertical domains. So this is what you have to make sure to be present in the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one last question, or is there? Yes, we have one there, if we can pass the microphone across.
Hi, I'm David Gutierrez from Samsung. One related question to the verticals. In the call, there is a mention to industrial cross sectors also, so I was wondering whether that means that different verticals are expected to, you know, coexist in the facilities or in the nodes, or rather, the Commission expects to choose one vertical and then, so one industrial sector, and then having multiple vertical companies addressing different parts of the same use case or related use case. So I don't know if I explained myself correctly, but...
I try, I try to understand, but I think that the message is clear, because we mean about, we speak about concurrent usage. So we don't mean just one vertical, one industrial, for example, vertical, one industry, and then...
But for example, since in the white paper that you mentioned, there are different, very different verticals, such as automotive or media or e-health, there could be different vertical companies related to one of those verticals, having very different requirements for their services, or you could have automotive and media, for example, coexisting in the same facility.
It will be different verticals, I think, because they have to show that slices with different requirements, for example, can coexist. So that means that slices with different completely required requirements satisfying other verticals can really coexist in this trial. So it's not, it has nothing to do with companies, different companies.
I raised the question because of the cross-sector, industrial cross sectors word that I found, but I think it's clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll have to call time there. Thank you very much, Pavlos.
Thank you.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
We'll go quickly to the next presentation from Didier Bours. I apologize, we're going a little late on time, but I guarantee there is some networking session afterwards, and they will save something for everyone, if you bear with us. Didier, how quickly can you do it?
Five, five minutes, David. David, do we take five minutes? So good afternoon to all of you, it's very great. I will try to cover few perspectives related to, let's say, the prestructuring model. I guess most of you know the prestructuring model. I'm very happy, because in fact, we introduced the prestructuring model 3.1, you know, the first Phase 3 prestructuring model in Ljubljana in October, in the info day last year, and then, working with the overall community, we released the second version of the prestructuring model, and we presented it in Budapest. So in fact, I don't want to go into the details of the prestructuring model, I want also to give you some hints regarding the ICT 17, ICT 19, as seen from the technology board, and also from the trial and the roadmap perspective. So you know this slide, you have seen it, so it's a customized version, where you see also the number of projects, the timing, the budget, what's the key message here, and it's very, very great time, because in fact, we are running full speed. You understand, the PPP is a big program, and we will have at the end maybe 80-plus individual projects, but this is really working as a program. And the Phase 1, you can see on many booths, achievement from Phase 1 project, you know, that the Phase 2 project are running at full speed, so they're really full speed after one year. And then we see now coming and starting the Phase 3 project. So the first Phase 3 project that starts are ICT 17, and soon, we will have ICT 18 and ICT 19. So basically, in order to possibly work really with a programmatic approach, from the association perspective, right from the start, we identified that we could develop this prestructuring model approach, working on the basis of the work program, because Pavlos reminded that the only official, let's say, document for the evaluation is of course the work program from the European Commission, but working globally with the community to try to identify what could be ideally the set of projects in the portfolio of the coming phase. So we don't touch at all proposal, we don't discuss about proposal, but we project ourselves, and we take the work program as a reference, and we say what could be good to have in the portfolio of the next phase. And this has proven to be a very, very interesting exercise, so I had a chance to do that with most of you. Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3.1, we prepare the next prestructuring model for the first coming call, like ICT 20 for beyond 5G, and this is very, very important. So you see, basically, when the project gets selected, and so we work with the colleagues in the context of technology board, steering board, to define, let's say, this reference figure for the different project, and also identifying what are their main, let's say, focus areas. So you know, of course, Phase 1, you know, Phase 2, and step by step, we will introduce and include the coming Phase 3 project. So this is what has been developed in the context of the Phase 3.1, so and you see the calls that have been addressed, the strategic objectives that have been addressed in the first version of the prestructuring model for Phase 3. A lot of, and you know the specificity of the Phase 3, it's 400 million euro, several calls, consecutive calls, and basically also much more specific compared to the Phase 1, Phase 2. In Phase 1, Phase 2, the prestructuring model, it was, let's say, there were the strengths in the work program, and working with the community was really to identify what would make sense in the portfolio. So yes, we need a priori to have a project dealing with, just to give an example, air interface, to deal with architecture, and so on and so forth. So for the Phase 3, the first call, the strategic objectives are very specific, so it's platform, it's vertical pilot. So basically, when you look at the prestructuring model... So basically, when you look at the pre-structuring model, and if you don't know, I encourage you to visit the webpage from the PPP website, you have some recommendations. So we provided recommendations for the ICT 17 project in terms of definition, we also recommended for the corridor ICT 18 and ICT 19 also in terms of recommendation for the vertical pilot. So one of the questions that was raised just before, for instance, is addressed in the context of the pre-structuring model, related to what could be expected in terms of vertical cluster and how it could be organized. So you see, let's say, this is the Phase 3.1 pre-structuring model. So this is just an extract from the pre-structuring model, so there are a few slides and we did it last year, so this is still valid, this is not outdated, but on top of that, there is much more work hopefully that has been progressed in the context of the PPP and in different working group. And this is what I want to stress just now. So Pavlos has shown this slide that we have developed and this is what is very good in the PPP as program is that you take the different constituencies, you take the different components of the PPP and what I would call connecting the dots and connecting the different actions. And this is just to illustrate what has been developed, working with technical managers, so the technical managers of different project, plus the Trials Working Group, plus the vertical task force that has been recently set up in the context of the PPP and to make what we call this vertical cartography. So basically, we developed this and I'd like to thank all colleagues who are involved and this is working, still progressing. So this is a version that was, let's say, developed in April, May and this is further progressing, what will be trialed and piloted with vertical stakeholder in which sector related to Phase 2. So you see clearly already, a lot of vertical stakeholders are active in the Phase 2 project. And let's say, as one of the key takeaway from this session, for the ICT 19 proposal that are under preparation or that would be further developed in the coming months, look also, of course, at the heritage, you know, look obviously at ICT 17 project and try to better understand what provide ICT 17 platform project, but look also at existing Phase 2 project and their development in order, really, to further complement and ensure that we have a very strong portfolio with the Phase 3 ICT 19 project. So you see, this is captured in the roadmap, there are a lot of details in the roadmap and we have in the Trials Working Group a dedicated stream addressing the vertical pilot. And then you see, it's another example also of what we addressed in the context of the roadmap with this strategy for vertical, identifying the different bodies. If you attended the session, the panel session, very interesting vertical panel session, you have seen, for instance, as illustrations, the 5G Automotive Association and so the new 5G Asia for Industry 4.0. And you see basically that we have a lot of expectation on this forthcoming ICT 19 project that will demonstrate specific use cases and functionalities on top of the existing ICT 17 project and also potentially additional features or complementary specificities, if not already available on the nodes of the ICT 17 project. So this, I know this is very time limited, so basically, visit the pre-structuring model if you like to know exactly what it is. Join, by the way, I make a call, join us if you're interested to develop the next pre-structuring model for the over strategic objective, like beyond 5G. And check also the roadmap, because the roadmap is on a six-month basis. So we presented the roadmap in Austin mid-May, so the next one will be for November. We work, let's say, on many different actions, including the vertical pilot, the platform and many other fields. So that's it on my side, thanks for your attention.
Thank you very much, Didier. We'll go straight to the last presentation, which is my pleasure to wrap up on a few points. I'm not going to spend much time, I'm just going to give you some information points that help with, or hopefully will help you with finding the opportunities between now and November. I don't need two microphones. I still have two. Okay, one point is, many of you might or might not be aware of it, but on the 5G PPP site, there is actually a brokerage service. If you follow the link in the menu, you'll find it. It simply allows you to do one of three things. You can either go in there as an owner of expertise and put in an announcement that this expertise is available for people to look at. You can go in as the owner of a project idea and, the difference here is, anonymously put in the project idea and invite people to contact you. We had a discussion as to whether it should be anonymous or not, but in the end, people wanted, the people who wanted to propose ideas didn't want to identify themselves yet and they wanted to see who was interested in the idea. If that's the way it works, that's the way it works. I don't know if everyone will be happy with that, but it's what's there. The third one is, simply go in as an interested party, see what's in there in terms of expertise offers or in terms of ideas and get it. So, have you remembered the three things? If you're a proposal or an idea owner, promote it, ask people if they're interested. If you've got expertise to offer, you can put it in and people who are interested can find it using keywords or whatever. And the third one is to browse it. You can actually go into those pages and just browse through what's on offer and decide if it gives you something. So that's one service, it's available to you now. In fact, there's already a couple of expertise offers in there because people found it. Okay, if you're planning a proposal, a little bit of a warning to you. Article 41.4 in the Grant Agreement means you actually have to work with the rest of us. So with all the other projects, you have to go. That means there's a steering board where the coordinators of the projects meet. It's not too expensive a workload, it's usually about a couple of physical meetings a year and probably twice the number of audio conferences, but that's where there's sort of policy level and program level discussions between the projects. We actually had to organize a separate technical board because there are issues that want technical discussion between the projects. And there we discovered that the steering board people, although they were good project leaders, they weren't the right guys for the technical discussions. Didier is the chairman of the technical board and he orchestrates a set of discussions. There's then a set of working groups. Now, working groups, participation in them is optional, it depends on whether the working group topic is in line with your interest. In fact, there's several different types of working group. There's some started by the projects, which are closed to project participants, there's some started by the industry association, which have a slightly different participation nature and there's one or two that are actually public domain discussions. Again, this is optional and each generation of projects can decide they want different ones. I did notice that in the discussion, no one answered Bernard's question about how the projects will interwork. So maybe either this will fall into Didier's technical board or maybe a working group, we'll see what the interest is. As always, there's going to be major events like this event, where there'll be demonstrations required, presentations of project results and that. So please keep that in your planning. And yeah, maybe sometimes you'll be volunteered to actually be the representative of the 5G PPP and go somewhere. So have a look at this, there is actually a document on this in the website, it's under making a proposal or whatever, and it gives you the sort of information that just you have in mind, what is the level of collaborative activity needed to be an Article 41.4 project in the collaboration agreement and part of the 5G PPP. The Info Day, yes, this surprise announcement that everyone's heard about by now, on the 14th of December, hosted, thank you, by the European Commission in Brussels. We will discuss the room size, I think, again, considering the interest level. They're up to about 80 seats at the moment. We'll organize a registration page sometime. We have to sort out between the Commission who handles the registration, whether it's handled by our website or their website for security reasons and so on, and also for general data protection rules now. But we'll sort that out soon and send an announcement when that's ready. The one other announcement is, we'll be told about the next EUCNC at the end of this event. However, the planning is already going on for the seventh Global 5G Event and that will be right before the EUCNC next time. So what I would suggest is, anyone considering a proposal, please keep these events in mind because they're going to have to be part of your plans and probably we could guess that the ICT 19 projects will be launching in Valencia next year. Plus minus.
Probably before.
Probably before, I like the ambition of this guy. Okay, there are the announcements, that's all we really wanted to ask you to stay for. Thank you very much for staying for the session and thank you to all the speakers.